Are we ready?
We are ready.
Get ready.
I think the cats have been heard it, Dan.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for attending the Monday, August 19th, 2019, Board Meeting. This is like, science is a joint board meeting between the Library Board and the Village Board. So, I will call to order the Village Board and ask for roll call on our side from our clerk, Patty. Boudreau?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Balig?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Horton?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And then I'd like to ask the Library Board to call their board to order.
If we'd like to call the Library Board meeting to order, could we have a roll call?
Yes. Severson?
Here.
Bustler? Steta?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Kaplan?
Here.
Glish?
I'm over here.
Do we shoot up?
Here.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, item number five is your review of a new library building status. So, we have some items that are here. I am going to take these one at a time. So, the first item is 5A, conceptual discussion including sustainability, sustainability design with OPN Architects and Library Director Jennifer Way. So, Jennifer, is it okay if I just let you run the show? All right.
Absolutely. First, I just want to say thank you to everybody for your support of my first year, which I just completed. So, thank you all.
Yeah.
Six months ago, you might remember that we engaged the services of OPN Architects to do conceptual design for the new library. Since then, we have a building committee that's been working really hard, including a couple of new members that are just joining us for the first time tonight, to try to design a library that is responsible fiscally but also meets the needs of our Oregon community. So, we're very excited to present our initial vision for that to you tonight. I just want to preface it by saying conceptual, conceptual plans are just that conceptual, and we'll have ample opportunity to further add details to that and further refine the plans in the future. Right now, OPN has a contract that they're nearing completion on, and so we'll have to take a little bit of a pause until we're able to rehire them. That's part of our MOU agreement, the Memorandum of Understanding, which many of you were part of approving. That kind of outlines our process, and we'll revisit that later tonight. But, I'm going to just turn it over to Brett and Wes from OPN Architects, and they're going to highlight our conceptual design plans.
Does this one work here?
Yeah.
Use this one. All right. Thank you, Jennifer. And thank you all for having us here tonight. I'm Brett. This is Wes with OPN Architects, another team member that some of you have met, some of you have not, is Mindy Sorg. She's in the middle there, holding the fish. She was not able to join us tonight, but she helped lead a lot of the programming and things like that. So, a lot of work has went into this, and we're excited about it. So, there's been a few things that have changed since this was shared the last round. Some of the comments we got last time were that entry sequence just wasn't quite worked out to the point that we wanted to see it. And that was mainly a comment about getting pedestrians from Main Street to that main entry of the library. And so, we worked out how that drop-off sequence works, the book drop, I'm sorry, how that sequence works, so that way you could minimize the pedestrian and vehicular crossover. That required shifting around some of the parking in that main area, but what it helped do was simplify that whole sequence there to the main entry there. And then, last time, we thought it was always important to keep this in mind of how this building could potentially grow into the future. So, that orange or red box off the end of one of those wings, that's about 5,500 square feet. Now, that is total, first and second. What that doesn't include is basement level. So, that would, that number would go up if that area got expanded as well. Okay. Thank you. So, this is that basement level. Again, that would just be a mechanical, because of the slope of the site, we had the opportunity to get a majority of the mechanicals under the building, because it is accessible from one, one direction. It slopes toward the north, so from that area, we can get access and pretty cost-effective square footage down there. So, from, on the main level, I'll walk through these pretty quick. Most of it is very similar to what we had last time with just a few tweaks. Where the two cars are, if you come straight down from that, that is that main entry. In that, that green box that's right there is that main lobby. Right off of that, to the south, that first orange cube that is there, that would be the circulation desk. And right behind that is that, the majority of the staff area that is there. If we go back to the lobby, on the other side is that community room. We have that shown as a subdivisible room, so if you had two functions, smaller functions there, you'd be able to break that room up, and both still have very nice access to natural light, daylight from there. And then, on the south side of, of that piece is just your storage room, kitchenette, and then some restrooms that are right there. There, back in the lobby, there's the stair that gets you up to the second floor, and then also connects you to the green space that is under that tree that is there. The blue area, that is the children's collection. So, that is the majority. All the blue is the children's collection. And then, back towards Main Street, in that north corner there, is where the children's program room is. That, we feel, has a really nice presence to Main Street, so at night, this thing will glow, have a lot of vibrant activity to it and everything like that. Then, off of that, you'll see a series of green and gray boxes. Those are a series of family meeting rooms or family study rooms, a new mother's room, and then a family restroom as well. So, now, if we go up to the second story here, that teal color right at the top of the stairs, well, I'll back up. At the top of the stairs, we really want to have a large opening that connects that first and second story, to really help create a nice vibrant connection between those two. And then, as, the further you get away from that opening, it really becomes more quiet, subdued, that private sort of spaces, the further you get away from that. So, the teal zone is all the adult collection. And, yep, there, in there. And then, along those windows, you'll see a series of seating areas and things like that. Again, the orange is the, that, the rest of that staff area. And then, what you see, kind of in the middle of the plan there, right north of that orange area, are a series of study rooms. And then, on either side of that orange cube there, the staff area, you have a reading room to the left, and then a large conference room to the right. Excuse me. So, now, if we go back to that northern wing that kicks there, right at the top of the stairs, on the opposite of that opening, is where we have the unconference room. That's more of pretty relaxed seating, kind of think of your, your living room at home. So, it's meant to be very relaxed, kind of not as formal as what a typical conference room would be. Then, as we pointed out earlier, the rest of the adult collection there, and then that's adjacent to the young adults' collection there. Just south of the young adults' collection is where we have the maker's space. So, that is a room filled with technology. We usually like to see that pretty well located near the young adults, but still very accessible to the rest of the public. So, now, we can go to the exterior and start talking about that. This, again, is just reminding everyone, we did a poll very early on to get an understanding of what everybody wanted as far as the aesthetics go. And so, these were kind of the six winters, we call it. There's a lot of glass, a lot of wood, sloped roofs, and that's kind of the palette that we tried to work with when we were working through this. So, now, we can keep going. So, this is where some of the design has changed a little bit on the exterior from what you saw last time. The stone is still the same as what we showed last time. But, what we did on the wood pieces, previously, we showed that as more of a gray panel, more on the warmer gray, but that still wasn't quite hitting the mark. So, we took a look at what a very warm wood tone would look like with that building. Still accents very well. The, the glass, the natural light, has a very warm, soft, accessible feel to it. And this would be the view if you were turning onto the site from Main Street. Again, that same shot at night, potentially. We don't see the interior quite being blown out the way that it, that it would be like this, but you can see the young adults and that reading area on that second level would just have a very nice feature to it at night. So, as we start to approach the main entrance, what you would, how that starts to welcome you into the si, or into the building there, and we can go to the next here. So, then, from the northern part of, of the site, as you're approaching the building, looking south from that northern edge of the parking lot there. Right when you step into the lobby, we want to see a fairly open stair. Obviously, the risers would be something that would be closed off, but we do want to have a very open feel to the library. And then, that further connection to the green space beyond. So, you're starting to see a glimmer of that tree that is back there, identifying that area back there. Right from the, the top of the stairs, looking down the adult collection, back toward Main Street, what you would see there. Obviously, you're not seeing all the books and the stacks and all of that, but the, the ability to get just a ton of natural light and that exterior-interior connection is really what we're trying to get there. And that's, that's a quick walkthrough of, of that, of the design.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions before we move on?
Jerry? Thank you. Very impressive so far.
Thank you.
And, but I do have questions, obviously.
Absolutely.
So, the main entrance is going to be off of North Main. Is that what I'm understanding?
No. Could you go back to the, the site plan there? Sorry, Jennifer, if you want to answer.
Yeah. So, it's, it's, it's kind of an interesting lot in which it's got connections both to Johnson and Main Street. So, you can see the, the building kind of curves in the middle, and that's so, when you're coming down Main Street, you kind of can see the entrance. The entrance is actually kind of in the middle of the bottom, just to go left.
The center.
Right there. That's the main entrance, right there. So, it's, it's oriented so that people from Main Street, pedestrians, are feeling welcome in, but also, people are parking in the lot on the north side towards Johnson Street. Everyone is kind of welcomed into that center, central entrance.
So, will there be an entrance off of Johnson also?
You're talking about driving entrance versus building entrance?
Oh, Union Street, Street entrance, Jerry?
Yes.
I apologize. I thought you were meaning.
Traffic. I mean, auto traffic or vehicle traffic.
Yeah. So, right now, this has driveways on North Main Street and on Johnson Street. We had some conversations with Mike Grace and Mike Slavny about how to kind of orient the, the traffic going in, and so, we'll be talking about that a little bit more later tonight on the agenda. But, right now, there is entrances on both of those streets.
Okay. So, will there be budget for lighting, or traffic lighting on there, on Main Street?
Jerry, you're, you're getting ahead of the.
Yep, it's on the agenda.
I'm getting ahead of the agenda.
You have the right to do that, but that's actually.
Okay. Yeah, I've been scolded now, Mike. Thank you. You know, those are very impressive designs that I saw here, and I congratulate you on those. But, I see, whenever I see so much glass, the first thing I, that comes to mind for me is utility cost. And will utility projections be part of the final design package?
They can be, yes. So, that, that's the next step, though. We can evaluate those kind of pieces. So, there'll be a series of energy evaluations that we can perform for you.
I would like to see that. I don't know if anybody else would.
That's fine. That's something we can produce. It would not be in this phase of the effort.
Right. And the reason I ask again is even though this is part, this is in the Village of Oregon, and it's part of the big library system in the state, I believe, yeah, the village taxpayers bear the cost of those utilities. So, it's in our Village Board's interest to find out what they're going to be charged when it comes to opening the library.
It's a very good question. We're a very sustainable-focused firm, so energy consumption is very important to us, and we do not want to see it be wasted.
Okay, so.
And obviously, on the capital side of your investment as taxpayers, we want to ensure that's evaluated as well. So, we provide that information.
So, then the answer to my question is yes, there will be utility projections?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And finally, I don't think I'm way ahead on this one, but, but I don't see it listed anywhere. I would really like to see a construction manager engaged for the.
Yeah. Mike and I were talking about that, and we're having a joint meeting between these two boards again in October, and we're hoping to have Attorney Callen from Matt's firm do some presentations on construction management and what that would entail and the pros and cons of that service.
Yeah. And the reason I ask is when the current police station was built, there was none, and that building has been very problematic. To, for an example, I mean, they opened the police station, and it had an archaic, outdated DOS system at the beginning. And I won't even go into what that cost, but that's what, the kind of things that a construction manager would alleviate or prevent.
Yeah. We'll definitely be exploring that more at the joint meeting in October.
Very good.
And Jerry, if it makes you feel better, that's what I do for a living, so I'm pro construction manager. So, if you're, if you're good.
We're, we're okay with that.
Well, Jenny, when you say, I know you're a construction manager now, but who will be there on a day-to-day basis?
Oh, no, I'm with you. I just, it'll definitely be something we'll be looking at, and we know how to hire somebody properly.
So, you'll engage a consultant?
Yep. We'll definitely, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Jerry, are you done?
I am done.
Okay.
For now.
All right. Corey?
Looking at the, the site plan, you know, the layout is somewhat challenging, and a lot of the parking ends up being quite a distance to get to the main entrance. And I just had a question regarding, are you going to have some form of a pedestrian way so we don't have kids walking long distances through the parking lot completely uncontrolled?
Yeah. Those are things that are going to keep coming. Again, these plans have more detail than they typically would at this point, so we've developed a lot more than we usually would at a quote-unquote "concept" phase again. And so, those are things that definitely need to be evaluated, because we want to have safety as a concern for everyone, not just children.
Okay. Thank you.
Jennifer?
To kind of piggyback on Jerry's question about ongoing utility costs, I am curious about ongoing window cleaning costs. So, I know there's similar libraries that have recently opened up with a lot of glass, so once we're ready to, when we're further in the process, I would love to have a conversation with those directors to see what that ongoing budget impact would be.
Is Uriah for hire? He's pretty good. He's always washing the windows as the firefly.
I think he has a couple of day jobs down.
Oh, all right. Just checking.
So, I'm, my comment is design. I have looked, saw some previous ones. I'm glad you guys added the, the wood, to be honest. It needed a little color to make it pop, and I think that, that what you did on here does that. To me, it kind of has a historic feel, the building. I think it fits the neighborhood, too.
Jennifer, are there comments on this part?
I don't think so. I'm, just again, want to reiterate that this is still subject to change. So, we have, we're going to pause the design efforts for fundraising for the Memorandum of Understanding. And so, then, when we get to the point where we can get your approval to rehire an architect, a lot of those things, additional levels of detail will be worked on, those, you know, things that you're pointing out, and we'll be able to provide.
Good. Very good.
Jennifer, one quick question. That rendering right there, the, the side with the stone on it, is that the side that faces east?
That's the Main Street side, so that would be east.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
May I just say kudos, too? This has changed a little since I last saw it, because I missed the last building committee meeting, but I like the wood and the warmer tones and, you know, nice job. You guys have been very patient, and they've just done a ton of work to get this to the state it's at. So, just thank you for all your hard work.
And it's kind of constantly evolving. So, some of the building, we've had a series of meetings over the last two weeks, so they've made a couple minor changes to be responsive to that feedback. And so, some of the changes, our building committee hasn't had a chance to look at yet, but they're really trying to be responsive to the, the feedback we've gotten from like the Plan Commission, Mike Slavny, things like that. So.
Would now be a, so what I'd like, I see we have some members of the building committee in the audience, and, and I apologize, I don't know who the new members are, but would it be okay if we had the folks in the building committee stand up and just maybe say their names, so that we can give you an applause? Because these folks, for those watching, have done a monumental effort of working with so many constituent groups, so many governmental agencies. Jennifer, I don't know how much sleep you've gotten in the last six months, but building committee members, I see you out there, and board members, could you just stand up so that we could recognize you? All right. Hey, there's more. I know. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, this is just the beginning. I was, I'm going to, I'm going to say it.
Do it.
Yeah. So, we have a lot going on in this, in this village, and I feel like I, I'm constantly in meetings and doing things. And I was saying this to Jennifer before, I'm like, I'm like, we are a vibrant community, damn it. I just want to say it, because we are. Look at all the things that we're doing. And this is, this library is just, it's like making my heart sing. It's, it's going to be such a showplace. And thank you to OPN Architects for making us look good. I'm excited for this going forward, and, and then we're, now we're, we're going to talk about fundraising and all sorts of things tonight. But, I just wanted, we have so few opportunities in village government to feel good. Like, just, you know, feel good, folks. For like five more seconds. No more fuzzies. All right. And now, on to item B. All right. Review of the August 14th, 2019 budget square foot analysis. Back to what we actually do. All right.
So, this is just part of what we hired OPN to do, is provide a budget cost estimate. And it's a little tricky, because we don't, they don't have a crystal ball and can't exactly project, you know, cost whenever we get to the point where we're actually building. But, they do have data from Oneiki Public Library, which just opened about a week or two ago, that, that's a library they designed. And so, their cost estimates are based on that. I'm going to turn it over to Brett, because he knows these numbers inside and out.
Thank you. Yeah. So, the first time we presented these numbers, there was quite a range between low and high, and there was some uncomfortability with that, just because there was such a range to it. And so, I think literally the day of our prior meeting, we finally got numbers back on what Oneiki came into, and we felt that was a good case example, really recent, to compare this library to. And so, we used that as kind of our middle target point, when we applied that to it. And then, when we started looking at low versus high, it came right in range with what we had talked to the building committee about, as far as what that high number should be. So, and I, no, Jennifer and I had a conversation about fear that we were making a budget fit the, the design that we had. And I told her, no, this is actually just how the math came out. And so, so we felt good about that, that we had that current case study, that then we could start applying these numbers, too. So, that middle number, if we look at, you know, the building roughly right now is 33,000 square feet. That does not include the basement, because that's still in flux a lot. We don't know exactly what we need to have down there for square footage. But, if we applied that $250 a square foot, that brings the total project cost to $11.4 million. The high number of that, we just looked at 260. Again, Jennifer pointed it out, there's still a lot of detail that we don't know about this project. Are there areas that we're going to be able to be more cost-effective with? I'm sure we'll find those as we progress. But then, there might be some feature areas where we want to spend a little bit more money, because it does have a drastic impact on the way that the, the space feels. So, we use this to help us guide. If we start tilting one way too much, then we see what we need to do to correct it back the other way. But, we try to use this as a good mark where we're moving forward.
And I just want to reiterate, our building committee is an excellent group of folks, and we really made a lot of design choices to try to be as responsible and responsive to our community's needs. So, like I asked, for example, about some sizes of spaces in Oneiki, and then compared to what size we're asking for, and in every case, aren't the spaces we were asking for were smaller. So, we're trying to be really efficient and thoughtful about the design. I wish the numbers were a little bit more favorable, but our building committee really had a serious conversation about how to present this to you tonight, and they really felt strongly that we should present the vision that we thought was right. And then, after fundraising, we can see where we're at and go back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. I, I mean, I'm a, I'm a big proponent of, of thinking big and seeing how far we can get to the big, right? If you don't think big, you're not, you're not going to get anywhere. So, and I, I mean, I could just speak personally, as one person of seven, I know that we, I mean, I, okay, now I'm talking for all of us, I am committed to having this building being environmentally friendly. I've talked with engineer, the architects about that. So, and just keep, I mean, I know the building committee is thinking about that, but I, I mean, I can't speak for everybody else on the board, but I personally would be in favor of trying to find more budget dollars if that, if it meant, you know, doing friendlier things for the environmental, geothermal, you know. I mean, I don't, don't have to be LEED certified, but to like, to be in that direction. I'd love for this building to be on the cutting edge of environmental technology, because to Jerry's point, that saves the taxpayers money in the, going down the road. It's, it's a long-term investment. So, I don't know how everybody else thinks about that, but that's me. Yes, Amanda?
Yeah. I, I would agree with you. I, I think there's some other areas, avenues to explore, though, something that I've been looking into, not on behalf of the board, just on my own, talking to Citizen Action of Wisconsin, and they're trying to get municipalities and homeowners and all kinds of people to be more green. And there's a great program called the Rural Energy Savings Program. It's got $100 million, just sitting there, of federal money. And what it is, is interest-free loans to your utility companies. So, we'd have to probably go through Alliant Energy. But, you, we have to get them to participate in the program, and they request the funds, and it allows all of these geothermal, solar panels, anything that's attached to the building, to be like an interest-free loan for the, the energy company. So, and then, that we pay it back on bill. So, it would allow us to pay it back over time as part of the energy bill, because a lot of times, the barrier is the upfront cost. But, if we could budget in over time, a little bit over 20 years, we, we'd be able to do that without having it impact our, our building budget, which would be fantastic. So, there are options out there. I just, you know, we can explore all kinds of things.
Reaction, feedback to the, the budget square foot analysis? Yeah, Corey?
I see a, a big difference in the cost for the soft costs related to the automated material handling system. And, you know, I know that that will result in a lot of, you know, efficiencies in the, in the library, and I think we'll really need to consider that. You know, the, the low investment one has zero in, in there. And I just wanted to make sure that we really think about that. And also, if that low in, investment one is selected, I would hope that the design would accommodate that to be added into the future.
Yeah. We do have a space designated for that. If we don't use it for that, we would need it for staff to process those materials themselves instead of through the AMH unit. So.
Okay.
Jenny, do you want, do you have any comments?
I was just going to say, we did take that into account.
Now that we have conceptual plans, we have two companies that can provide a budget cost estimate on those systems, once we have these drawings to get to them. So.
All right. Very good. All right. Are we ready to move forward? Okay. So, item C, there's, there's a copy of the Memorandum of Understanding in the pocket for reference. Several people sitting at this table spent almost a year putting that together, including Jennifer and Jennifer. All the Jennifers were there. And I just want to say that, even though that, that process is a little painful, what a useful document that is becoming, because now, we have this roadmap, and we're like, whoa, it's not the roadmap, you know? So, I think it's saving us time and arguments, for lack of a better word, moving forward. So, thank you, everyone, for working on that.
And it's kind of a roadmap. And so, just where we are on the roadmap is Architectural Services is step three. We just have like one or two last loose ends to tie up with that contract. We're doing step four, which is the fundraising. And then, the next step is determining the final project budget at the conclusion of the capital campaign. So, that's kind of the big work. After that, the rest of the steps will go really quickly. Once we get that approved budget, we can move forward pretty, pretty quickly at that point.
Right. Okay.
And just so you know, kind of our, we're in our capital campaign right now. We're looking, hopefully, June 2020, to kind of be able to say that we're ready to go, and here we are. Just so you know, there is kind of a set plan for that. So.
Yeah, I think we're gonna talk about that in item six. So we'll let, yeah, so we'll let you guys give us more info then. Okay, so now is when we actually get to do some stuff. So item one, Jenna, item is requesting a proposal from Vandalwall. This is our Village Planner, Mike Slavney, to begin preparing a general development plan, a GDP for the project. So do we just need a motion here?
Yes.
By both boards?
Yes, please.
Okay. So Library Board, do you want to discuss and amongst yourselves and make any motions?
So really, we just wanna make sure, because in order to develop, we need to make a motion for the GDP. So do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have to say, "I'll make a motion"?
I'll second.
Do you guys want to motion and then discuss, or?
Can somebody just define what that is? Please?
Yes. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So now we're entering the bureaucratic phase of building a municipal building.
Did you say bureaucratic?
Bi- no, yeah.
That's the best part.
She's making it sound better.
So.
Bureaucratic.
Yes, bureaucratic. Yeah, sorry.
That's my point is fun.
So what we're doing is we are, we are making the village go through the same process as we would a developer. So if a developer comes to the village and proposes a project, we make them go through a series of pretty detailed steps and hoops that go before various commissions and committees at the municipal level, to make sure a project is done right and taxpayer dollars are spent wisely. So a general development plan is what we would ask a developer to do, to, and quite frankly, there's a good start here on the conceptual plan, because this is an amazing conceptual plan put forward by the architect. But, so in that GDP, Mike, do you wanna say all the things that would be in that?
Yeah, so for example, why Mike Slavney's saying we need to do a GDP versus just like a site plan review, is because we're probably gonna wanna have some flexibility on setbacks, as an example. And we thought of hiring a consultant, which, and then we thought, well, then Mike's gonna review it, so we thought, let's just have Mike write it. And we've done that before on other village projects.
Okay.
So that would, that will go before the Planning Commission. So so far, this conceptual plan has gone before the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission does not vote on conceptuals. They usually give thumbs up or thumbs down and give feedback. And the, the Planning Commission has some really valuable feedback that's already been incorporated into this. That was nice to see. OPN is very, very responsive to that. But then, so the next, once the GDP was written, that would go to the Planning Commission, which will pick it apart and make sure everything is in line for moving forward.
And Mike thought, doing the GDP, even this really is a good roadmap for the project. It'll make us make sure we looked at everything before it gets presented.
And just to address the source of funding, we believe that impact fees could be used to pay for the source of paying for that service.
Yep, that's correct.
So a general development plan is pretty much, it's a roadmap of how you want the project to be, but it also, it allows flexibility if there's changes. So it's just a really good planning document. It's also another really good excuse or way to get it in front of the public, because we're always wanting public feedback, public to be engaged, public hearing. So.
So it's step-by-step, it includes some timeline elements, but it's really who owns what, timelines of when that could be done?
No, it's more of like, how many step, like, what's the setback from here? Is there water management? How many parking?
Making sure that it hits village ordinances?
Yep.
That type of thing?
And you have, you have what's called a general development plan, and you go what's called a SIP, which is a, is a, is a plan that's, basically, it's gonna be this final, final conceptual plan. And it's just a good checklist. Otherwise, we'd be, just like I said, we'd be going through a site plan review. This is a little more involved. And Jenny's really, that's a good point you're making, that because we're going through GDP process, we have to do a public hearing at the Planning Commission, so all the neighbors will be invited.
Thank you. Hopeful explanation.
See, we've all sat here long enough that we know what a GDP is. So thank you for making me try to explain that. That was a good exercise for me. All right, so I'll let you guys vote.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the GDP to be prepared by Mike Slavney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. So Village Board, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
So I have a motion by Jenna, a second by Randy. Any further discussion? Yes, Amanda?
Just out of curiosity here, I'm sure impact fees will cover it, but what is a GDP run cost-wise?
Well, that's what this motion is. We're gonna get a proposal from Mike.
Oh, proposal, okay, so it's not.
And then I'll send it to the Village Board and to the, Jennifer, we'll send it to the Library Board. So you'll see. We're not actually approving, we're just getting a proposal.
Gotcha.
All right, all in here, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And then item two is requesting a task order from Strand Associates to analyze traffic counts and flow on North Main Street. The village will fund this task order through the Tax Increment District Number Five project. Mike, do you wanna talk a little bit about this?
Sure. So Jerry, this was your question about the flow of traffic and everything. So when you actually look at the TID 5 document that we created a couple of years ago, this is like the number one project in the, in the project list. That's how important, we knew this was gonna be coming up with the building and the library. So this would be funded through TID 5. And I think Jeff and I are proposing to hire Strand, who's done some additional traffic analysis just recently at, we look at it tonight regarding some of the schools. And they would start looking at traffic flow and counts, and how it's gonna work with the front of the building, and.
Correct. Right. And also look at possible pedestrian routes, pedestrian loads, as well as looking at the feasibility of a stop-controlled pedestrian crossing at that location, and geometrically where it may fit best on that frontage.
And like Jerry, a number of neighbors have expressed that that's important to them, you know, the traffic flow and safety for pedestrians is important to them as well.
Very good.
Yes. Can I just ask, is Johnson Street gonna be included on that? Because you're gonna have more traffic from the library on that street also.
We, well, not necessarily. I mean, it'll probably be discussed, but we're really looking at how, how things are gonna be affected on Main Street. Because that's the main entrance and the main, you know, it's a highway right now, actually.
I was just thinking, they may be thinking more instead of putting a light right at the entrance, or, just for instance, you know, maybe putting it at Johnson, since traffic would be turning more there. I don't know. I mean, I would feel like maybe they should keep that in mind, or, as a, as part of it, because of the in and out on Johnson from the library.
Yeah, so they'll probably, actually, I think they probably will look at the intersection of Johnson.
Okay, okay.
All right. So Library Board, do you want to make a motion on this or discuss?
Do we need to, if you guys are?
I was gonna say. Well, you know, I, it's funny, I did have it, and I thought as a courtesy, I mean, since we're doing this together, I thought we should.
Yeah, that's perfect. Just wanna make sure we're not bossing you guys around.
No.
So can I have a motion to request a task order for traffic count?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. All right. Village Board, do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to request a task order from Strand for traffic counts and flow on North Main Street to be funded by TID 5.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item number six, we have an update regarding the fundraising efforts.
So I just have a quick update on that. At first, just wanna thank the large number of community members who have stepped forward to volunteer to help make this effort possible. We have a wonderful team of people involved, including some of our own Village Board and Library Board members. They're all very excited and working very hard, and everybody's contributing in their own way, towards their own talents. We have a few of those folks here tonight. The Steering Committee has been meeting for six months to kind of get the preparations and everything for the campaign in order. We, as you know, just got that $500,000 anonymous gift, which was, has been very inspirational and has generated a lot of excitement in the community. We're also excited to have plans. That's kind of the next thing we've been waiting for, because people wanna know what it's gonna look like before they support it. So we're excited to be able to have that, to start talking to community leadership to do everything we can to raise the funds that we need. We're in what they call the quiet phase, so you won't see a lot of, our efforts to engage the whole community will kind of be, come a little bit later when we get to what they call the public phase, which will come later. But we'll, we'll do everything we can to engage, you know, the whole community, from, you know, the youngest child having a lemonade stand, to all of our older residents who've been in the community for a long time. It's really a library for everybody, and we wanna get everybody engaged in a way that's meaningful for them. We have a great logo that Bob had from Orange Web Designs created for us, and a great folder that we're using to talk to community leadership. So if anybody's interested in seeing a copy, I'm happy to show you one after the meeting. Does anybody else from fundraising have anything to add?
Do you wanna talk about the partnership with OCRN?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Oregon Community Resource Network is also partnering with us on the library project. They've chosen, they're working on three different projects right now, and the library is amongst the projects they're supporting. It's a really great partnership for us. They're a 501(c)(3), which might open some opportunities for grants that we might not otherwise be eligible for on our own. And it's just great, they can help bring awareness. We have two of their members involved on our campaign cabinet Steering Committee, and they're just a great partner for us. Randy, do you wanna add anything to that?
Just, the check is in the bank. Jenny, can I just mention, so going back to what you were talking about, the June 2020 deadline is, do you wanna explain that maybe to?
Yeah, so when we kinda said our fundraising goals, we kinda said that we would try to wrap up by June 2020 to kind of say, you know, this is, well, hopefully that we've raised like $600 million. This is to kinda have an idea at least of where we are, and kind of assess, you know, what we need to do, and kind of that way. If we get done beforehand, if anybody wants to write us a check, we take checks. But if we get done before, then clearly we'll be done. But that's kind of, we're trying to set a timeline, so it doesn't just drag out forever, so.
If people are listening, who should they make the check out to, and where should they deliver it?
If they're interested in supporting the project, they can give me a call or email. My number is 835-2322. The check can be made to the Oregon Public Library. I'd like to have a conversation with them, because there's lots of naming opportunities, there's different donor recognition levels, so there's lots of ways that they can make a meaningful contribution. You know, as you saw the plans and the budget earlier, the donations we get will have a direct impact on what we're able to do for the library and the community for years to come. So it's gonna be really important that people that believe in this step forward to make it happen.
Right. And I know a lot of the folks sitting around this table have stepped forward with pledges so far, and I wanna thank, thank you for that. Also, I should mention that all of the folks on the Building Committee, on the Steering Committees, on the campaign, the fundraising committee, and the Library Board, you all are volunteers. No one is paying you to sit here. We get paid a little, but you all are doing a lot of hours out of your own time and passion, and thank you. So thank you, thank you. All right. I'm ready to move on to number, item number seven. Okay. So, so we have a review of the Library Board's recommended 2020 budget and the library's 2020 goals and selected 2019 accomplishments. And I'll read aloud here the note from Mike Grace. Is that okay if I read it aloud?
Oh, please.
Do you wanna read it? It's your note.
You can do it.
All right. All right. So Finance Director Lisa Nowitzka and Village Administrator Mike Grace have reviewed the Library Board's recommended 2020 budget with Library Director Jennifer Way. As noted last year, they feel the Library Board's recommended budget continues to prepare the village for building and opening the new library building, and they want to thank Jennifer for submitting another well-crafted budget for consideration. Please note, both Boards will be requested to review the recommended library budget again in October, like we do all other department budgets, once the village has received its net new construction amount from the state of Wisconsin, and the Village Board has provided direction regarding the 2020 tax levy adjustment. We will also need to see if the open enrollment period for health insurance impacts the budget in October. So we have, we have a preview of the budget in our packets. Jennifer, do you wanna make, give us some highlights?
I'm just gonna give a couple of quick highlights. I've been talking for long enough. But the library impact fee revenue did get increased. We did adjust, together, adjust the impact fee, fee amount, so that'll result in some increased revenue for our 2020 budget. At the bottom of that same front page, you'll see Buildings, and we have $235,000 budgeted there. I don't alarm you by putting that number in, but that's, with that timeline of the campaign finishing in June, we wanted to show that we anticipate some architectural costs. That amount is roughly what is available in impact fees right now. But again, that would, it would require your approval of both Boards to move forward with that. So that's just kind of a estimate at this time, when we got proposals from architects again for additional services, based on where we are at, when we set our final project budget. That would be required before we move forward with those, those expenses. The next page in your, in your budget really has no budgeted amounts, so we can just skip that one. Page, the page that says 28 in the top right corner, we do have a couple revenue accounts I wanna highlight, because there have some decreased amounts. I just wanna explain those briefly. Our county grant is county we get, funding we get from Dane County, and we are expecting a slight decrease in revenue for next year. The funding formula is very complicated and averages things over a three-year period. It took an hour for them to explain to me how it worked. But it just, it's highly fluct, it highly fluctuates from year to year, so it's something we don't have a lot of control over. Library fines are also an account. We expect lower revenue for next year. Many of the libraries in our area are going fine-free. So Fitchburg and Verona, for example, no longer charge fines at all. And some of our community members do use those libraries, and then would pay those fines at our library. Since they're no longer charging fines, we're expecting a little bit of decreased revenue for people that go to those libraries as well as ours. And then the, the most substantial part of our budget request is personnel increases this year. The Library Board has two main goals for 2020, which is adding additional library staff, both for 2020 and in preparation for the new library. And the second is providing market wage adjustments for the staff over a three-year period. So just like the village did last year with lots of the village employees, we have great staff as well. We appreciate all they do and wanna, you know, keep them, and make sure our wages are comparable with other communities. You will notice a difference between the department-headed line, which is the staffing amounts that the Library Board approved, and the administrative budget. Mike and Lisa and I met to talk about how we can meet the Library Board's goals, but still be fitting with the village's fiscal constraints, and try to make those work together. And I feel confident that the number that is recommended will continue to reach those shared goals that we have. It does include wage adjustments for library employees. So I think, Mike, I think the amount was around $20,000 for next year, which is, and then would be continued over a three-year period, just like some of the past wage adjustments have been for other departments. In addition, it allows us to add an additional part-time library staff position for 2020. And then it kind of gets us back on the step plan, where we would be, previously, there was a step plan to increase library staff over a period of years in preparation for the new library. Now that we have a better timeline, and we were able to make the step plan happen over three years instead of two, and so this kind of, the adjustment kind of says we'll add some additional staff in 2020, 2021, and then 2022, to kind of get where we were going. Previously, it was trying to culminate in 2021, which was a little bit tighter fiscally. And then, in addition, it really minimizes the impact on the village budget by spreading that out over multiple years. Anytime you try to add a staff position, it's, it's hard to do that without a significant increase to your personnel costs. And so this really allows us to do that in a way that's a little bit easier on the budget. So do you have any questions? The other thing I should note is, because we did have some decreased revenue, I did thing I should note is, because we did have some decreased revenue, I did try to identify a couple accounts that we could reduce expenses. And so I looked at some historical data, and on the next page, there's a couple accounts you'll see that the amount budgeted are slightly lower. And I feel like we can make those reductions without having any negative impact on the library budget, just based on historical data that we've seen so far.
Questions on the budget question? Yeah, Jerry?
Is this your final budget, Jennifer, or will it be another, when we get to budget time in the budget hearing?
This, this is the budget that the library board has approved.
Okay.
So I don't foresee any changes. The library board would need to talk about, you know, any differences between what they presented, what the village board recommends, you know, what the village board or the village administrator is recommending.
Okay.
But I don't see any, I don't see any requests going up from what's here.
I mean, like any other department, if we get to open enrollment, Jerry, and three employees take family health insurance, we'd have to come back and...
Yeah, my point is, we've got our budget meetings coming up in September.
October.
No, I mean, for, oh, yeah, this is October, isn't it? We'll have question, we'll be able to ask all the questions then, right?
Yeah, we're going to have a joint meeting on October 14th with the library.
All right. Yeah, I'll hold any questions till then.
And if you have any questions, let me know, and I can make sure I get you a thoughtful response ahead of time.
That'd be fine.
All right. Do you want to give us some highlights from the goals and the accomplishments?
Major goal is to raise the money for the new library.
Your phone number is?
And to keep doing everything that we're doing. So, we have an excellent staff. Like I said, there's a lot going on at the library for the community, and we just want to keep doing that. We updated our strategic plan, so we're using that to, as kind of a roadmap going forward again. Yeah, that's, that's all I want to highlight right now.
Okay. Jennifer, anything you want to highlight, or?
I just want to, again, want to say thank you to Jennifer for all her hard work and how much guidance she gives all of us. So we just want to thank you for working with Mike and for the village for listening to us and working with us.
And you have some staff here tonight, so thank you.
And Mary too. Thank you.
Yeah.
Alicia.
I think it speaks volumes that you have a couple key staff people here tonight. They literally have your back. So, that's pretty cool. All right. Any discussion, comments on that from board members? All right. So we are going to be scheduling our next joint meeting between the library board and the village board to review the 2020 budget. This is on Monday, October 14th at 5:00 p.m. That's part of our budget, our budget series. So if you all want to make sure that's on your calendar, I'm sure that'll be another thoughtful discussion. Anything further unless?
I've got something before we adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
So I noticed, when we were looking at the proposed costs of the library over time, there was about a million-dollar difference between 2020 and 2023. And it seemed like that was related to inflation.
Yeah, they, the budget proposals they come up with do include an inflation figure.
So, I just wanted to remind the village that, from my perspective, you know, first of all, you build it right or you build it over. And our current library is a great example of that. We're going to bulldoze that. I don't know what it costs, but it's all going in the ground. And then, and then the second thought is, is if you wait and debate and deliberate over whether or not the village is going to borrow an extra million dollars or not borrow an extra million dollars, you could wind up costing yourself a million dollars and still having to figure out whether or not the village is going to borrow a million dollars or not. Now's the time to borrow as much as the village can borrow, for as long as the village can borrow it. And there's no guarantee that 2020, 2021, or 2022 are going to be better than they are right now. We're borrowing money under 3% right now when we go out to bond. That is amazing money. The other thing to consider is cost of construction. If you go to look at residential builders right now, cost of construction is going up every year, because demand is going up every year as the economy gets stronger. So I would really encourage the village board and the community at large to lean into this project and not get too caught up on the pennies and miss the opportunity to build the right library at a cost that makes sense. And that's my only thought.
Amen.
Thank you.
Are you sure you have to leave?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I think I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, library. Thank you. All right. So we'll let, let you guys move out.
Because it's cake.
Was that a motion?
It'd be too late at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, really.
Shoot me the second. Shoot me the second.
We're just going to, we're just going to, yeah, like a one-minute recombobulation here and there. Break here. Jerry wants to make a motion for cake, so.
I'll second.
Have to go for a bike ride before bed if he does that.
Yeah, really. I can't have any more cake today. I already had cake. All right. So if I could have our village department heads sit up here so we can keep on and trucking. Thanks, Mary. See you. All right. I think we're mostly there, so we will keep moving forward. So, public appearance. We have none. Item 11A, so this is under the village attorney, village administrator report. Item A is discussion of possible action regarding Village of Oregon, Tycey Printing Service Memorandum of Understanding relating to dispersment of TIF grant. Mike, do you want to explain this a little bit?
I'm going to have to.
Perfect.
All right. So this is kind of a technical issue, really. We have a dispersment agreement in place today relating to the release of TIF funds that are in escrow to the title company to help pay for construction on the project. The way it's structured currently, TIF funds can be released to, for example, a contractor to pay a draw request. What's happened is that as contractor draw requests have been made, the title company has been dispersing just lender funds entirely to pay those. And we've been asked by Tycey if we would be willing to allow for dispersments of TIF funds to go to the lender to kind of reimburse the lender for covering our share of a draw request. That's kind of the way I'm thinking about it. We're still requiring that lender funds be ahead of the village funds by like this five-to-one ratio, so that only $1 village money goes in for every $5 of lender money. But because the current dispersment agreement doesn't specifically allow us to disperse to the lender in this way, we prepared this memorandum of understanding to say, that's now okay. So that's why this is before you. And if you have any questions, I'll try and answer.
All right.
And Jeff, as I say, Jeff, we're not trying to make you vote one more time. Tycey just, you know.
Poor guy.
Sorry. I had to say.
All right. So, we have a recommended motion to approve the memorandum of understanding. If someone wants to make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I give up.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for doing the legwork on the stuff that matters behind the scenes that aren't, isn't warm and fuzzy. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Junie, before you get into this, can I correct something on the next agenda items?
Yeah.
I think it may impact. So, Jerry, while I caught a really good point here, in my, in my note for 11B, it looks like, it says $500,000 if you look at my note. It's supposed to be $500.
I read it as 500, but that's good to know. Okay. Jerry, did you have a stroke when you thought that was 500,000?
He called me this morning.
Mike hurt a lot.
Solve some problems with that.
So a little typo there, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So I will read that item now. So 11B, we have a discussion and possible action regarding intergovernmental agreement with Dane County Drainage District Board for Badfish Creek Maintenance Work. We have a recommended motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement contingent on the drainage district board receiving the required DNR permit and inserting the completion date into the agreement. We have a note from our village administrator in the proposed 2020 budget. He will propose a village annually fund approximately $500 to $1,500 the drainage district's annual report for the first addition to the Badfish Creek district, rather than having the district board specially assess the other members in the district. So, does someone want to walk us through this, and then we'll make a motion?
So, there's really kind of two pieces to this. One is fairly simple, and that's this intergovernmental agreement, the purpose of which is to just get the cleanup work done that's been addressed in the, in the Badfish Creek at a cost of not to exceed $20,000. And so that's part one. That's really the, the item that's really before you tonight is the agreement. The other piece that Mike referenced in terms of the ongoing expense, so as, as you may recall, there is a drainage district. A lot of different properties are in that district. The drainage board has not yet gone through the process that would be necessary to kind of apportion benefits for that. They'd have to go out and survey all the different properties, identify, itemize all the different properties, and go through a process of trying to figure out how much is each property benefited by the drain in order to then bill village residents for the cost annually of their share of just the drain board's operations, which really amount apparently to an annual meeting where they have to send out notices, and then they do an inspection each year and decide whether there's any work that's necessary. And so, apart from this agreement and just getting this piece of work done, we, we had a meeting with the drainage board folks, and we talked about the likelihood that the village board would be willing to, if the cost is relatively small, and it sounds like it is maybe around $500 a year or something, just pay that. They would invoice the village rather than kind of push them to have to go through that rather extensive process of getting the district reactivated in a sense, and then billing all of the district members for a very small share of the cost. So, you're not being asked to agree to pay for any of that tonight, and, and there's no formal agreement apparently being proposed for that? That would be something, they'd send a bill every year, and then you guys would decide, do we want to pay it?
And they're doing that with the village of DeForest currently.
Apparently, that's how DeForest handles it. It just makes things easier from an administrative standpoint. I think we're finding that the district is kind of a handy tool to address the issue that we're dealing with. They have some authority that we don't have to get into an area like this and do work and to get permits. And so, it seems like a useful entity to keep around and to try and support what they're doing and make it easy for everyone, rather than make them and the residents go through a more complicated process to allow them to function.
All right. Yes, questions? Amanda first, then Jerry?
I'm wondering, well, first off, did the district already say that they intend to move forward with clearing any obstructions for this? Have they voted on that yet?
They're meeting Wednesday night, Amanda.
Okay, so that's coming up. But they wouldn't do that if they were, thought it would cause any problems downstream, right?
They actually have two of their three members here Wednesday, Wednesday morning meeting with us. So they actually had to notice their meeting. So, they certainly indicated, we even offered to go to their meeting Wednesday night, and they said, don't worry about it. They're going to, they're going to approve this agreement at their meeting Wednesday night.
Okay. But I meant the actual cleanup, they haven't approved any?
Well, I mean, they haven't entered into the contract yet, but they have, I mean, they have a party lined up who's ready, willing, and able to do the work. They have a cost estimate. They're just waiting on this agreement, which needs to be formally approved by this board and their board.
Yeah.
And then they need a permit from the DNR.
DNR permit.
And then, all of the indications are that they are willing to move forward with the work and that they're ready to go if everybody, you know, if both boards approve this. And then, in terms of your question about would they do this if they were concerned about downstream impacts, I, my sense is that if they were concerned, they would let us know that they were concerned. But they don't seem to have any concern about downstream impacts. They, they think there's some value in doing this work, that there is some cleanup that may be helpful. No one's promising that this is going to solve all the problems over there, though. This, this, this may be a marginal improvement. We'll see how much of it improves.
I just want to make sure that if there's a downstream impacts, that this agreement kind of absolves of any responsibility for bad effects.
They're not, Leonard, who was at the, at their pulp works meeting and, at their meeting on Wednesday morning, expressed, expressed any concerns about that. What he actually talked about was that you can only, you can only drudge the creek to a certain level, which is not lower than the people's basements. His point was, you're, this is probably not going to improve their wrong conditions.
Okay. All right. So Jerry, and then Cory?
Thanks. I've got a bit of a disconnect here. I've got Mike's, 11B, Mike's got a note here. $500 to $1,500 for the fund.
That's separate from the agreement, Jerry.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the agreement is $20,000.
Correct.
Up to $20,000.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I assume we did not budget for that?
We, we would probably take the money out of our developer stormwater fund. That's probably where we'd take the money out of.
Okay.
Most likely, yeah.
So, and I don't know if Amanda asked this question, or was alluding to this question, but my last question is, does this, are we incurring any liability by doing this? Future liability?
If you mean by future liability, are we obligating ourselves to do this again?
Yeah.
No.
Exactly.
No.
Does it say that in here?
No, but it doesn't have to. I mean, what we're, all we're doing here is we're agreeing to pay up to $20,000 for this work. We, I don't think it's necessary to say, and we reserve the right to not do this again. I mean, if they want us to do it again, or if the neighbors want us to do it again, they'd have to come back and ask, and you'd have to approve it again. This is not binding the board to do this again.
Okay. So, why are we motivated to spend up to $20,000? To get the water movement through the village better?
Yeah, I mean, I think in some respects, you know, we're doing work on the Foxborough area, the Gulf Course area. We thought, you know, being good neighbors, there is, there was, Cory and Jeff and I did take a walk out there back in the early summer, late spring. And we, I mean, there, there is blockage on the creek.
Yeah, I don't doubt that.
Yeah. And, and, and we can do this a lot faster than them, Jerry. Jerry, this is, this district has not been active for 100 years.
I know.
And so they, so they'd have to go through first and identify all the residents, and it's, it'd be a long process. They, they wouldn't probably be dredging it this year, to be honest with you. By the time they got it.
Or next, probably, if they.
By the time they got organized, yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm just, I mean, it was our recommendation as a gesture to the neighbors that we're hearing their concerns. But just like Leonard from the board, we're not saying this is going to dry out their basements like they're worried about. I mean, but we think it's going to help move the water through the, through the village.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that was my concern. You know, we, we spend up to $20,000, and then there's a litigation saying, hey, your work didn't fix it, so we're going to sue you now.
Well, I mean, we don't have a release from all the neighbors. I mean, I'm not saying that this, this work, this, we don't have an agreement from all the people who might complain, that they're never going to complain again. This is a small, limited action which may provide some relief, but...
I even asked the question that, so they're going to have the ability to put the spoils, you know, when they dig out the creek versus, we were doing it, we had, we'd have to haul it away. And I said, well, which side of the creek are they putting it on? They said, the north side, and that's where they're, that's what they're going to do. And maybe some of the residents are not going to like that, but that's, the district board has the authority to do that.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to belabor this, but I would feel a lot better if there was a clause in there that said that the village absolves itself of any future liability that may happen.
Well, again, this is an agreement just between the village board and the drainage board.
Mm-hmm.
The residents who live out there, they're not parties to this agreement. They're, I think they're interested in this going forward. They'd like to see it happen, but they're not parties to this agreement.
Thank you.
Cory?
My question is just for staff. Do we have enough definition in what maintenance work is actually going to happen, and that we're getting a good value for the money that we're spending?
Well, they, what they have sought a price from, I believe, and I'm trying to remember the bottom width, I think it was six feet, and side slopes of three-to-one, basically opening that channel and taking it down to the, basically removing the sediment. And that could vary depending on where, where exactly they are. But that's really what we are giving for this. The only other thing it could add is possible, possible maybe culvert at the Demagio Park entrance there, you know, and that kind of stuff. This, this all started off with when we said, okay, we recognize that there's a cattail bunch up there that is blocking things, you know, severely. Can we just get them, the contractor, to go in and do that? And they came back and said, well, the contractor's not going to just do 50 or 100 feet. And the board said, you know, we think we could get this whole thing cleaned out for under $20,000. Now, we, as a village, and go out on public bidding, you know, we can't even come close to scratching that. They came back and did get a quote from a, who was this contractor?
Curtis.
Curtis, excavating, I believe, for $15,000, depending on where the spoils would be placed. And there's no way we would ever have anything designed, bid, and awarded for, for that kind of fee. So I think, I think this is a fantastic deal for the village.
That answers my question. I guess just for clarity, though, this goes from where those cattails were, all the way down to the railroad bridge?
It goes actually from the railroad bridge all the way up to the connection up beyond the cattails.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right. Are we ready for a, for a motion? There's a recommended motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement contingent on the drainage district board receiving the required DNR permit and inserting the completion date into the agreement. You want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for your work on this, Mike and Jeff and Matt.
It's exciting. First time in 100 years, right?
Right.
Breaking ground.
Yes. And so, my- Yes, and so, Mike, if you could do us a favor and just make a connection perhaps with Jamie White? So that she can keep the neighborhood.
I sent her the, I sent her the agenda, but I'll make sure that she knows about it.
Yep, so I would just want to make sure that the folks, those, that neighborhood knows.
She's, she's really good at getting that out.
Okay, yeah.
And we anticipate this happening this fall.
Perfect, okay, all right. All right, so 12 approval minutes, we have none, 13. We have a note that this payment has been included in tonight's vouchers, but we'd like to vote on it separately. So we have a discussion and a possible action regarding Jefferson Street and South Main Street Parking Lot Lighting and Electrical Improvement Project. This is payment application five. We have a recommended motion to approve the payment application number five in the amount of $57,273, an extra amount of $2,984.13 from United Electric, Inc. For the Jefferson Street and South Main Street Parking Lot Lighting and Electrical Improvement Project. So Jeff, do you want to give us a, a date on this?
Is there a second?
Oh, I just want to make the motion before we hear about it.
I'll make it.
Sure, all right, we have a motion and a second, second, all right.
All right, great.
Go Jeff.
Just want to get, step on procedure there. But, yeah, have you, have you had a chance to be, go through the parking lot back there and everything? At night especially, it looks, and the dumpster crowd's done. I'll be actually bringing something at a later date, just kind of.
I would have mentioned the flowers maybe and the landscaping, but it's nice that you called out the dumpster crowd. Also, the landscaping looks really nice.
It's where my heart is.
Yeah, I know. Different points of view here.
You know, we've had, we've had a large stormwater event. The parking lot worked perfectly. The lights are up, they're working. We had a little glitch with some of the operation on it, and they're up and working. Things look great back there. The landscaping's done. They are doing the, the final approach right now into the parking lot. So they're going to do half for that, let that set, and then they'll do the second half because they can't block it off.
Is that sort of like replacing the concrete apron? Is that what they're doing? Okay.
Yep, and, and making that so it's a three, three-stall wide, you know, approach. But no, I, and I'll be coming back later with kind of a, I want to thank, publicly thank United Electric. They did a really nice job, and Mike Montalto and the Jefferson Crossing folks and everything like that. But, and as far as the extras, you know, that they have on this, is less than 1% of the contract, which with a contract like this is, is great. And so, yeah, I have nothing but positive things to say about, like I said, I'm excited. I don't know why I'm excited about a parking lot in a dumpster corral, but.
Well, because it's downtown.
It is, and it looks, it looks great back there. And we hope, hope that encourages the owners and the tenants and the residents that are back there to kind of start dressing up some of that, what used to be an alley.
And we have facade grants available for that, right?
Exactly.
Right, yes.
Yep, we have facade grants up to $5,000 or 25% of the cost. 25% of cost up to $5,000 for improvements to the facade.
So I like, I think about how that area has changed over the last couple of years. You want other more fuzzy board members to think about that area two years ago? And look at it now.
I actually had a discussion today with Gary, and I just said, "Gary, I said, we need to start thinking about, you know, what do we want to do for the holiday decorations back there? Because we don't have anything back there yet. And, you know, if it's a chance for us to maybe do all white lights back there or something, or all blue, I don't know, something, just kind of separate it, but it might be, might look really nice."
We never even used to want it lit.
Now, yes.
We just need a big flashing arrow.
Yes, I, please don't look there. And now it's like, ooh, how are we going to decorate it? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve this payment. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, on to the approval of vouchers, and let me get this up.
And Jeanie, if I could just say that, the cover sheet, it says to the village board on 8/20. That's actually supposed to say 8/19 on the cover sheet of the, just for the record.
Okay. All right, so tonight we have a voucher list for August 19th, 2019, and a total of $547,788.38. Do we have questions? Do we have to have a motion to approve first? Yes, so do you have a motion to approve?
Go ahead. No, I've had plenty tonight.
Joe's got the second.
I'll second.
All right, now we have questions. Questions, questions, anyway. That's Amanda.
Go ahead.
I'm preempting Jerry's question here, I probably, I have a question on, I don't know what page we're on. It's David Landau.
That's, that's a library expense. So there is a Dane County Beyond the Page initiative, and so we are serving as a fiscal agent for a grant. And so it's just, we get the funds, they get deposited to the village, and then we pay the expenses on behalf of all the area libraries. So it's the one performer that's being coordinated to go to a number of area libraries. There's no cost to the village. We got the funding to offset the expense. It's just going through us as a fiscal agent.
Cool, good, all right. Jerry, any questions?
Actually, more of a comment. I see a lot of, I see expense here for, it's called Streetscape, but it's really flowers and things like that for the planters, I assume, Jeff.
Yeah.
And again, I, I think we need to compliment Gary Deesh and his crew. I'd, I'd call them all by name, but I don't know who's all involved in that.
We always recognize them probably in about a month. We give them a gift certificate, Jerry, in September.
Yeah, but I agree with you completely.
Very good, very good. And the only other comment I have is regarding the Dane, Dane Con, six-month cost of $7,500. I'm hearing that the paging system does not work properly. Does that, anybody know anything about that?
The what system?
Paging system.
I've not heard that.
Okay. Maybe it was hearsay then.
EMS?
The EMS are for?
Is that what you're thinking?
Fire, yeah.
There was issues with the radios, but they got that worked out.
Did it?
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
I will say, Jerry, actually, and I don't want to, not speaking on behalf of police, but ever since we've switched over to the new system, what, two years ago? Near and a half, two years ago, we've had phenomenal luck with it.
Great, okay.
Yeah, especially village-wide.
Anywhere in Dane County and village-wide, yeah.
Thank you.
Further questions? Yeah, Randy?
I have one for Jeff, one for Brian. Jeff, and I can't find it. I saw it stood out, something to do with signals.
Traffic signals?
Yeah.
Yeah, we pay, we, we pay Dane County to.
They come and put new bulbs and stuff?
City, city, I'm sorry, city Madison. And they maintain and everything for our traffic signals.
And Brian, I saw one, one for sunglasses. For, it says community education. Is that something like we give out to kids?
Yeah, it's for kids, yeah.
I just thought, I didn't know if that was part of the uniform now, that we bought sunglasses for.
Well, we do buy them as, as part of the on-officer camera system as well. But that's for the kids.
All right, awesome, thank you.
All right, so then I'll have a roll call for approval, please. Glish?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Balig?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have community input at that time of our agenda. Anyone in the audience wish to talk to us? Look at those folks jump to the front. All right, that's a no. On to 16, we have some board comments. So first of all, I'd like to give, on behalf of the Village of Oregon, our sincere condolences to the family and coworkers of Oregon Observer reporter Amber Levenhangen. She covered our, our village board meetings, and just want to know that we are thinking of the staff, especially at the Oregon Observer during this difficult time, and to just recognize her good work. If you haven't seen the issue, current issue of the Oregon Observer, there's some very nice columns and articles about her work and her very short time here.
Bring a tissue.
Yes.
You're going to read it. It's quite moving.
All right, and then on a second note, Dane County Executive Joe Parisi's sustainability efforts. I want to thank trustee Amanda Peterson for going to a countywide meeting last Thursday and representing the Village of Oregon. So if you want to give us an update, that'd be great.
Uh, yeah, a short one. So Mayor Sacha Rhodes Conway of Madison, it's a joint effort with Joe Parisi, Dane County Executive. They had a meeting where they invited all the municipal officials in Dane County to come, and it was a good playtime to network and talk to other municipalities, hear what they've been up to with sustainability, climate change issues. There was a lot of talk of the anti-idling system for, like, ambulance, fire EMS is a possibility because a lot of times the truck has to be running while they're working in the back or using the equipment. But they have systems now where they can still have power without leaving the engine running, which is a great idea. You know, ideas like that, things that, that Madison's already doing, and they want to share what they've learned with outlying communities. And it was, there's going to be four working groups moving forward that we're going to meet on a regular basis. One's on solar energy, one is on groundwater, oh, there.
The handout, that was in.
There's a handout?
In a little folder.
Oh, look at that.
It's a cheat sheet.
Okay. Sorry. Yes, so there's solar development, renewable fuel usage for municipal fleets, energy efficiency and sustainability for facilities, and green infrastructure to manage runoff from heavy rain events. And people signed up for the work group, so of course I signed up for all four on behalf of the other members of this board who might want to attend because I'm not going to four more meetings every week or whenever they meet. But it's a great idea, and I'm happy to see that collaboration. It'll be good.
Good. Well, thank you again for, for representing Oregon. It was, it was interesting because it was, it was a nice, also like a little PR movement, public relations movement. And then it was a nice, a nice agreement between the county and the city of Madison and all municipalities. And then if you saw the next day, Governor Evers announced a sustainability effort. So it's, for me personally, it's nice to see these things coming to the forefront after a dearth of not, not talking about it in Dane County. So these are also passions of mine, as you can tell from my comments for the library. So, yes, if anyone is interested in participating in these, let Amanda or me know because I'm sure I could do one of them. And Amanda also signed me up for all of the emails, so, thank you. I was, no, that was perfect because I was, I was planning to go to the meeting, but I was.
Actually, I signed me up for all of them, but on your behalf, so I can pass it on to whoever wants to go to what group.
I'm already getting the emails.
Are you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good, well, it wasn't me then.
No, no, it's good, it's a good thing. All right, so thank you for that, appreciate it. All right, so then, this is another feel-good moment. So I personally, on behalf of the board, Jeff, he's still awake, all right, cool. We want to thank trustee Jeff Boudreaux for his years of service on the village board. First of all, everyone, there's, the cake is back there. Where's the cake?
In the fridge.
Oh, I'm like, did the chief eat the cake?
It's been a long day, I was really hungry. It's in the fridge.
Okay, I guess there really is cake. Okay, so please, everyone, join us after the board meeting for cake in the back of the boardroom. That's just sort of a little, you know, a way, because in, in Wisconsin, this is how we celebrate, by eating food together. But personally, I would just like to thank you for your many years of work. And you've been a very active trustee and been very just passionate, and we appreciate the passion. And, you know, it's interesting on this board, we don't all agree always, but I feel like most of the time we leave this room in a pretty good place. And if we don't, it seems like we make an effort to make sure that before we come back to this room, we're, at least we're, we can see each other in the grocery store and not avoid each other in the aisles, right? And that's, I don't know if you all know this, but that's pretty uncommon in this day and age in municipalities for a board to be this, I don't want to say friendly, but just we have a, we're very, we're very just efficient at our jobs. And Jeff, you had a lot to do with that because even, I'm thinking in the early days, Jeff and I would spar sometimes at meetings because we sat right next to each other. And at the end of the meeting, either Jeff would be like, "Yeah, so was I lying?" Or be like, "Yeah, sorry, I was kind of mean." And you just, you led the way in that, so thank you for teaching me that important skill. And I know that Mike wants to make some comments. Do you want to make those right now?
I do, I wanted to, for sure, say thank you to Jeff for his support for the staff. I mean that, I truly do that. I felt I needed to put that on the agenda. It's, it's been appreciated and certainly noticed by the village staff, Jeff, so thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We're going to be missed.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to clap for you now, and then you do your faceoff. Any comments you'd like to make?
I just want to thank everybody for the last five and a half years. This has been just an amazing experience for me personally and professionally to, to stretch myself and feel support, even at points where stretching means there's some conflict. And I echo your comments that when you are talking about things like village governance and money, and you're dealing with multiple complex issues, you've got a very short period of time to try to move the ball down the court. It doesn't always go well, you know, and even this board, at other points in history, has been much more volatile. And I think what that comes from is passion. People are passionate about what they believe, and they're passionate about where they live. And that passion gets conveyed in their decision-making. And if we could deliberate and debate on any given point, the amount of time we would need to come to an, an agreement, that would be ideal, but the truth of the matter is, there's so much work that needs to be done in such a short period of time, that the best we can do is agree to disagree a lot of times. And as a board, you all have made that, kind of the expectation, and I really appreciate that. So personally, thank you to the village and to the board and to the, to the residents of the village for giving me this opportunity. And then the last thing that I would say is, I would just encourage everybody in the village to spend two and a half years, two years on the village board, and just get a real understanding of, of the complexity of village governance and the, and the types of decisions that need to be made because I think that that will make you a better village resident and a better neighbor going forward. So those are my comments.
Excellent. Yeah, so the, the village board term is two years. It seems like two and a half, but it's two.
Two years.
Yes, thank you, Jeff, thank you.
Thanks, you're welcome.
All right, any other board comments on any other things? All right, on the staff comments, I will, I'll just read this aloud, but Mike said it. Just again, to make sure this is in the record, that on behalf of the village staff, Mike Grace would like to thank trustee Boudreaux for his support of the village staff along the board. It's been greatly appreciated.
You're welcome.
Make sure it's in the record. And then, this is also very much related. Item number two, September 4th is the deadline for applications for what will be a banquet village trustee building or position as of September 1st. So those applications are on our website, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Or people are just emailing me and I'm sending them.
Oh, yeah, so email village Mr. Mike Grace if you'd like an application. And we are going to interview applicants at the September 9th board meeting. So if you are applying for the position, please make sure that you're available on September 9th because we, we actually encourage, actually ask applicants to just speak for a few minutes and tell us about themselves. And we are planning on making an appointment that night if we have a qualified candidate, correct? All right, so there's your chance to get involved in municipal government and find out what a GDP is. It's fun. Speaking of municipal involvement, look at all the exciting meetings we have coming up. It's nice we don't have a board meeting on, on Labor Day.
We, we slightly skipped that.
Yeah.
No problem.
That's a treat.
No problem.
Wait, and so I won't, I won't read all those aloud, but.
This is for your, for planning.
Yeah, just make sure those are on your calendars. We have the budget meeting, budget season is coming up. Make sure those are on your calendars. Item 17, Communication Municipalities Business. Village Hall will be closed on September 19th from 1:30 to 3:30 for village staff harassment training.
Yeah, I was going to say that the village staff are incredibly poor at harassing, so.
We're training you every year. That's why, that's why we only do it every two years. I knew someone was going to make, I, I read that, I thought someone was going to make a comment, no, I'm leaving it on there that way.
I didn't even really get it on my mouth before that was, yeah, nice.
I'm holding on to that for a day.
All right, okay, so then 17B, we have a review of police department reports in our packets, and these are also available online for anyone watching. We have our K-9 reports. We have a summary of major crimes. We also have investigations activity report. Our police department is busy. Chief, do you want to give us highlights, comments?
Especially today, I'll talk about that in a minute. But the K-9 report, just so you guys know, Josh and Vende were up with Dane County narcotics and gang task force pretty much all summer, learning how they do things, and hopefully can bring some of that information back here to the village. But if you had a chance to look at that, they were extremely busy up there and confiscated a lot of drugs. Summary of major crimes and investigative activity. Again, like Jeanie said, we're very busy, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have on those. Seeing no questions, I did send out a crime alert today. We unfortunately had three residential burglaries last night in the gated community of Old Bergermont area there. Bergamot area there. It appears as though at least one of the burglaries was a forced entry, which we haven't seen a whole lot of in the area at all. They ended up going through a back, screened-in patio area, pushed that in, unlocked the door, and then pried open the patio doors. So I sent a plea out, again, to make sure that people are locking up their vehicles and their homes. One of the residents, there were people home, and I think two of the three, one of the residents there actually heard it occurring, grabbed a weapon, and went out, and they'd already gone. So it's a dangerous situation, but I want to make sure that people are aware that these things are occurring. There was some guns stolen at one of the residents' vehicle keys. What we've noticed is that a lot of these crimes, they're stealing vehicle keys, and then they're coming back later and stealing the vehicles. So just be diligent, do your part as much as you can. I also sent out a plea for any videos that residents may have in that area, to get them to us as soon as possible. And this kind of goes, when Lieutenant Pagencov was here, into that Ring portal that we talked about, that this, something that people can send us automatically, so. So that's where we're at today. So we had a busy day with that. I about had to tase a guy at Stop and Go, so that was exciting.
Today?
Today, yeah. Yeah, so, you know, everybody's out on burglary calls, they're processing three scenes, and we get a person call at Stop and Go, and some guy begging for money and scaring people. I go and identify him, doing well, and then his partner in his car. Something was wrong automatically, I knew it, he was giving me a false name. So as I'm putting him into custody, he starts resisting, and so I pull out the taser, and after that, he was cooperative. Like Jeff, he didn't want to be tased, so...
Or my wife, yeah.
And then we had another OWI, you know, in the village right after that, so we were busy and hopping today, yeah.
Peggy?
Chief, the two burglaries with the vehicles, were they unlocked, both?
The residences, I believe, were unlocked.
Yeah, that's how they got, they found the door openers, and that's how they got in. On two of them, that's what I...
The one residence is somebody that I know, they left, workers left the back door open, and they entered the residence that way. The third one, I don't know a whole lot about, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Well, thank you for being diligent and responding to that. I would also like to thank the police department for waking people up in the middle of the night when our garage doors are open. Happened to me, scared the bejesus out of me, and then I went to the front door, and oh, there's a police officer. Oh, crap. I knew immediately garage door. So I know that some folks don't like that, but hey, folks, the alternative is, people come in your house. So I'd much rather be woke up by an officer than a burglar.
And I appreciate you saying that. We have, we do get a lot of positive responses. They seem to all want to contact us on Facebook, and thank us for waking them up in the middle of the night. But you're right, the alternative is, somebody else waking you up, so...
Yeah. Yeah, I'd rather have an officer at my door than a burglar at my, the foot of my bed, right? Those are the choices.
Yep.
So thank you. Yeah, and I don't know if that, does that happen in other communities? Do officers do that? I mean, it seems...
Not normally, not that I'm aware of, so... I'm sure there are people out there doing it, but I don't know to what extent they're...
Peggy says not in her, not in her community.
I did that last week, and I just cracked my pants when I woke up in the morning and the garage door was open.
Really?
Yep. Well, Peggy, obviously you need to move to Oregon. I think that's the, that's the solve.
There you go. We will gladly wake you up at 2:00 in the morning, or whatever it is.
Also, we have a dumpster crowd. That's apparently very exciting. Very attractive.
Willing to give tours anytime.
All right. All right. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief, and please extend our thank you to your officers and command staff.
I appreciate that.
All right, so item C, we have a review of the Rome Corners Intermediate School and Oregon Middle School traffic analysis, and update by Stray and Associates. So we have no action required by the village board, but this is a follow-up to an item that we had several months ago, trying to solve some traffic issues.
At the two schools.
Yeah, if anyone has ever had kids and dropped off or picked up kids at that school, welcome to Nightmare City. So this is attempting to address a few of those problems.
Yes, exactly.
There are solutions. I mean, we have buses.
I agree.
And there are other areas that, but unfortunately, a lot of people are dropping their kids off, and they don't drop them off necessarily really early. They want to drop them off within about a five-minute span. So I would encourage every one of you to at least read through the report. I think it's really good information. One of the things that we did ask, and this is a partnership with the school district, we split this cost 50/50 with them, because they realize that, you know, it's their facilities. And so we're working with them. The report did a nice job, I think, in identifying kind of low-hanging fruit, things we can do for a very economical, immediate type of fix to some things, and, well, not fix, it's an improvement, we feel.
Right, yes.
And then there are some long-term, much higher capital cost type investments that the school district will have to consider and will have to consider. So we look at this as kind of a roadmap. It really helped identify and confirm what we all kind of knew what was occurring, but to put some numbers to it. And then secondly, you know, some of the improvements we're doing right off the bat, changing the timing on the crosswalks, on the beacons of the crosswalks, we're doing that. The roadway striping is being done this week, if you've noticed, but the guy's been out doing, painting all the crosswalks and getting those all freshened up. You'll see some temporary roadway delineator posts at the exit to RCI, and I think that's going to cause a few, shall we say, some Facebook activity.
Angst.
Angst.
Angst is my favorite.
And, you know, this is a great thing we can try for a couple hundred dollars, and be able to kind of see if this is going to help without preventing the left turns out of the parking lot. And then we have provided an informational map and guide to OSD for that facility over there. So I, Mike would agree with...
And the sidewalks of the middle school is really going to help.
The, yep, the RCI, or the OSD, or, school district put sidewalk kind of improvement over there to be able to help kids from having to cross the entranceway, which was holding up cars and everything else, but all positive steps. But it's just like what we're talking about, the drains district. Nothing's going to be 100% solve-all of everything, but these are very positive steps, and hopefully parents will start to get on board with that.
So Jeff, my question is, will parents know ahead of time, before school starts, that these changes?
Yep, that's what, that's what the school, the school district is doing.
They're going to let them know.
Yep, and that's why we've provided them a map of that area over there to be aware of it.
All right.
And they're helping with staff, I think, during some drop-off time periods to help kind of things through. PD will be out, obviously, helping to remind some people both...
We will definitely be out on Wolf Street. The reminding time is over, the consequences time is going to be approaching shortly, so...
Yep. No longer just sent to bed without dinner, huh?
Yeah, right.
I know.
I did notice that, and it's interesting, during the K-9 golf outing, I was sitting on the hole-in-one hole, and which has 15, which looks at Wolf Street. I would say, on Saturday at least, most of the problem with speeding and issues there are construction trucks. I don't know what they're going to or coming from, but as I'm watching them, they are flying down that road, so... I have had several people come up and complain, saying that they are going 25, and they're getting tailgated, honked at, flipped off, you name it, so...
We also actually, on that note, we have ordered the flashing signs that your speed is signs, and those will be arriving in the next couple weeks, and be installed in the next couple weeks as well.
And I did speak to one of the residents that live back there by Foxborough, and they said, "You will not believe how much quieter it is, just by reducing the speed by 10 miles an hour." Much quieter, yeah.
All right. So no action needed on that, but thank you for the work and the partnership with the school district on that. Thank you. All right. Item D, discussion and possible action regarding the South Stand Pipe repaint project. We have a recommended motion to approve the field change order of $900. Someone wants to make that motion?
Approve.
Second.
All right.
It's just a standard, kind of, it's one of those things I had to actually authorize, because they were out there. They noticed that the caulking around the bottom of the tank was failing. This is an area they weren't normally going to be prepping anything. They had extra paint, and asked, you know, if we would authorize something like that. Money well spent.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. Item E, review of investments, building permits, and impact fees. This information is in our packets. Comments from staff?
Any questions, if you have any?
No questions. I noticed the building permits are doing very, very well.
Yep, we're having a good year, Gary.
We're a vibrant, vibrant village.
Yes.
No, I'm waiting, you know that quote's coming out the paper, right?
As it should.
I like it.
It's, I don't know, it's true. Any questions on that? All right, item F. We have FYI only, that Finance Director Lisa Nowinski has filed the required video service provider fee form with the state, which will allow the village to receive, based on 2018 cable-TV revenue, the franchise fee payment from the state. So thank you for conducting that important paperwork. All right, and then now we're moving on to a report of committees. So we had a special, a very long, special, August 12th, 2019 Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee meeting, and I'm going to happily give these items over to trustee Jacobson, who chairs that committee, and did an excellent job at chairing a very long meeting. And go.
I bet you liked the long committee meetings. I'm so confused now.
They're my favorite.
All right, so for item 18A1, we had a resident approach us about the intersection of Foxfield and Autumn Woods, and I'll just, Jeff will probably go into more detail, but they were concerned about it being a two-way stop with the traffic the way it was, and with the eventual punching through to MM. So Jeff, do you want to talk a little bit more about that, or should we do the motion first, I guess?
Well, right.
Go, set it up, Jack.
Motion first.
The motion.
It doesn't matter.
All right, so, right, yeah, that's right.
So this was, Foxfield Road intersects Autumn Woods Lane, just to give you kind of a, where we're at here. This is the middle school, and that comes up here, Autumn Woods comes up the hill, and then there's a two-way stop with a two-way stop control on Autumn Woods Lane, and then non, it's a non-stop control on Foxfield. And the resident, I believe, is in one of these homes around here, was requesting a four-way stop. So typically, what we do with this, first of all, is we notify the police station and just, or the police department, and just kind of said, you know, "Could you give us a report on what you might have out there for any kind of accident report or anything?" Lieutenant Pagencov, I believe it was, looked into it, and said, "10 years, no incidents reported at all." So that wouldn't mean any kind of threat.
No accident reports.
No accident reports. You know, I've driven through that intersection, actually, when I, before I worked here, I was driving through that two, two times a day, every day, and, you know, you're coming down the hill, and when it's icy, we salt it a lot to keep it open, but, you know, it's never too much of a problem. I don't believe, you know, they were concerned with extra traffic from over here. There's only three or four or five homes up here right now that have been new in the last few years. My feeling is, you know, at the time that Foxfield gets punched through to County Highway MM, Wolf Street, I do believe it could be a candidate for a four-way stop, but it would have to depend on kind of, I think there's going to be a significant amount of traffic that increases down Foxfield, traffic that would normally going down Autumn Woods Lane, out Pleasant Oak, they're going to start taking this as an alternate route. I will. I mean, I see that as an opening, and so there's definitely going to be a traffic increase at this location. So we discussed that a little bit. My recommendation at the time was that it's obviously not accident-prone there, and now is probably not the right time to consider a four-way stop there. There was discussion on maybe getting some background data as far as traffic counts and speeds through that area at this time, which I think is a fine idea, and we talked about just probably in the next couple weeks, putting the trailer out there, gathering some speed data, and some traffic count data, that if and when this gets punched through, we'll kind of can run that again, and see if there's a dramatic increase or a need for something out there.
So with that, we, the committee passed a motion 3-0 to have the police department and the public works department get a speed, traffic count trailer on Foxfield Road to gather that information. And so I guess I offer that up as a motion.
I'll second it.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item...
Can you hand it out, please?
Oh.
That's Jenna's.
So, well, we do this, we're just handing out what else we... Yeah, so Jenna, you're going to say it?
Yeah. So, item two is the school, the 2019 School Resource Officer Agreement with the Oregon School District. So the Personnel and Public Safety Committee believe it is important to have the Resource Officer Agreement in place by the beginning of the school year. This, what I handed out, I'm just reading that. As most of you know, we have spent a lot of time trying to perfect and refine the previous agreement with little resolution. It is our viewpoint that a simpler, more streamlined agreement would allow all parties the flexibility to move and pivot as appropriate when dealing with our most precious asset, our children. Furthermore, this agreement proposes to set up a five-person committee to continue the conversation about what good looks like in terms of the Resource Officer Program and any agreements between the village, the school district, and the police department. So the committee passed this agreement 3-0, and sends it with a recommendation for passage by the full board.
Are you going to concur a motion?
Yeah, sorry.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2019 School Resource Officer Agreement between Oregon School District and the Village of Oregon.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Which one?
The one that's revised.
The short one.
Yeah, the revised one that's in there, not the one labeled as previous agreement.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I do have an administrative note, super, super ticky tack, but the second to last sentence, no, it's the last sentence. By said group map may be for...
Oh, yeah, that's a typo.
It's a group map may. Yeah, so we want to get rid of the word "map."
Yeah.
Yep.
If you catch that.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I will pass it back.
All right, thank you. I'd also just like to thank the Personnel Committee for spending a lot of time on that. We passed that item really quickly, but that's because we spent three and a half hours talking about that a week ago, and so if the public would like a recap of that conversation, it's, those minutes are in our packet, right?
Yes, they are, yeah.
Yes. So thank you to Candy, who was at that meeting, and put those minutes together very quickly, because we try to be very transparent here, and we want both the school district and the public to know what we're talking about.
I think it might have been recorded, too. Might be out on OCA Media.
We just recorded, Jeff.
Do what?
We recorded.
Oh, oh, we recorded for purpose of taking minutes?
Yeah, for audio.
Got it. Got it, I was confused.
But actually, I think when you read Candy's minutes, she did a masterful job of taking a long discussion, and I thought she did a nice job highlighting the items.
I did, too. I really appreciated those.
Three and a half hours, why does everybody keep saying so long?
I mean, if we're, if we're going to count the other ones, so.
We're trying. Alright, so moving on. Item B, so, oh, this is me, so August eighth, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Oh, so this, the first item on here is, Mike gave me a heads-up that we actually have to delay this item until a certified survey map is recorded.
Right, actually Matt caught that. Matt was going to prepare the resoning orders.
Thanks, Matt. Alright, so that'll be on a future agenda?
Yes.
We're not going to worry about that, okay?
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
See you.
Thank you.
Have a good first day of school.
I already went school shopping, got new clothes and everything, so I'm all ready to go.
Did you label it, though? That's the big, did you label it?
Stacy's got me figured out, it's like your animal's up in my closet. The giraffe goes with the giraffe, and then I'm good to go away.
Lost control.
Do we have sense of humor on the application, it's like a check or?
Sense of humor is very important. Alright, so, back to bureaucratic stuff. Item two, discussion of possible action regarding approval of a certified survey map for the Bergamot Phase, Bergamot Phase 5B. So the Planning Commission has recommended six-zero, that we approve the Bergamot Phase 5B Certified Survey Map, conditioned upon meeting the recommendations in the Village Engineers Letter dated July thirty-first, 2019. So I will bring that motion forward. Need a second?
I'll second that.
Anyone have questions on that? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry, Bruce.
You should just.
Oh my gosh, Bruce, I'm so sorry.
No.
You should come just say like thirty seconds, since you've been sitting here for two hours. But you have to come to a microphone and identify yourself.
And stay for Kate.
I'm so sorry.
Two things, is this on? I live in Verona, and I got a phone call at two o'clock in the morning that my garage door was up.
Oh.
So, that's one thing. The other thing is, yeah, because that golf cart path encroached in the back of those lots, we just wanted to adjust the lot lines, and now that's good to go, everyone gets a mulligan on me if they hit into the back of it.
A mulligan, it's golf speak for like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and being so patient and sitting there, but look at all the other stuff that you learned, right? I know, right?
That we're vibrant.
Alright, so this is a new thing that we're doing, we're, we find that sometimes board members, there's so much going on in the community that you may not know things that the Planning Commission is working on until they come before you for approval. So we're going to try to keep you in the loop on conceptual reviews that the Planning Commission is doing, because again, we're a vibrant village, there's a lot happening. So the, item three, there's no action on this, but the information is in the packet. We had a conceptual review on the proposed Netherwood Brewing Company at 201 Concord Drive, which is east of headquarters. All information is in the packet. Again, it was a conceptual review, it got a thumbs up from the Planning Commission, and a thumbs up just means keep moving forward. So now the next step is the developer will come to the Planning Commission with GDP, SIP, all, I don't know, all those fun acronyms, and then we'll really, really get into the bones of lighting, parking flow, traffic, noise, all of those things.
It may just need a site plan, possibly, possibly, depending what happens with the building.
So just to put this on your radar, this is something that's being proposed, it's not official yet, but it got a favorable review from the Planning Commission. And then item four, again, same thing, conceptual review regarding Journey Above Childcare Center. They are proposing a brand-new, large facility at eight-seventy Oregon Center Drive. The project will require a conditional use permit, and they gave a very nice presentation. This also received a favorable review from the Planning Commission, which I learned what a three-twelve roof is that night. So, oh, Rachel, you're nodding your head, you know what a three-twelve roof is?
It has to do with the slope.
Yeah, so, yeah, so for every twelve feet this way, it goes three feet that way. So you should come to Planning Commission meetings, because then you learn all the lingo. So what I do is I write notes on this piece of paper, then I pass them to Scott Meyer, who sits next to them, and he's like, he writes, I'm like, ah. So I've learned all sorts of construction, what work. So we're, the Planning Commission was very excited about this, it seems like a nice-looking facility, very much needed in the Village of Oregon. If anyone has small children, you know that right now, if you don't have after-school or before-school or infant care lined up, well, good luck. So we're excited about this and hope that they continue to move forward with plans. Alright, item C, I'm going to turn this over to Trustee Horton, this is from the August seventh, 2019 Park Board Meeting.
Thank you. Our first item, eighteen C one, is regarding, the pickleball group came in and discussed with us the potential adding pickleball courts into our J.C. Park Resolution, but I see that the administrator had on there a request to delay the motion until the September ninth meeting.
Yeah, rather than do a motion to change the resolution, I think what we, I may bring forward, we'll adjust it against, I just thought we'd just do one amendment to the resolution, so, so we can hold it for a meeting.
Okay, so I guess we'll hold off on a resolution for that. The Park Board did vote in favor of including six pickleball courts in with the plan instead of the twelve, and also including the installation of lighting. But we'll skip any action on that tonight. The second item, eighteen C two, was a discussion that the Park Board had with the Oregon Soccer Club. They requested to utilize rustic vineyards during the Fall Fury Tournament, which the dates of that are September thirteenth through the fifteenth. And again, this is just for that tournament. They are required to come in and request usage for that when they want to play games on that field, because it is a neighborhood park. So I'll make the motion to approve that request.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Steve's here for Kate, that's why. I, I'm just telling you, he's coming here to respect Jeff, but actually, he's here for Kate.
All over the room.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item eighteen C three is regarding the draft master plan for the Highlands of Netherwood that was prepared by Rutler. The Park Board made a motion to recommend approving that master plan with four conditions. Those conditions were to add a sidewalk on the east part of the property, to pave the gravel five-foot connection that is shown on the plan, and to look at the number of parking stalls, to see if the number of parking stalls is adequate, and then finally, to make the playing field a sufficient size to accommodate lacrosse and rugby. So I'll make the motion to approve that master plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
So Jeff and I have one addition, we actually went out this afternoon, Jeff, could you show what we're talking about? I brought the point that I'm concerned that we have all these bike trails in the area, and I didn't want the mixture of pedestrians and bikes on the sidewalk that we're proposing along the street, so Jeff had a good idea that we would just add a bike trail right through there, Cory. So you'd be, everyone would be staying on a bike trail, on a bike versus mixing the pedestrians on the sidewalk. So, again, this is concept, this is just a first look at, but I'm going to, I'm going to see if you can fit that into everything else we're trying to do in the area.
Sure, I'll amend my motion to include that path. Jerry, are you okay with your second?
Absolutely, Cory.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I pass this.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, so we have some minutes net requiring action, but thank you for your service for to the Fire EMS District Commission Meeting.
Jeanne, real quick.
Yes, please.
This probably would have fit better under board comments, but I believe this Sunday is the Fire Department's one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary.
Yeah.
Somebody will invite everybody to come down?
Yeah, August twenty-fifth, I think it's from noon to five.
I think you're right.
And it's going to be, I think it's going to be pretty exciting, they're recognizing many, many former members of the, of the Fire EMS. I know there's going to be food, nothing motivates people like food, tours, all sorts, open house, so yeah, a kid-friendly, family-friendly activities for little people.
There's going to be a flyover, too, isn't there?
Yep.
Twelve-thirty is when the major excitement happens, so definitely be there for that. And, yeah, they have a wall with nameplates donated by Bergie Jewelry of all of the former firefighter EMS volunteers, so it's pretty exciting. They've worked really hard.
Very, very good. Thanks, Jeff, thanks for reminding me of that.
You're welcome.
That's, yeah, that'll be an important date for our village. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, A, we have a discussion and possible action regarding village appointments to the School Resource Officer Standing Group, so this is here, if we approved the agreement, and we did, so I would, I would just make a recommendation, maybe, I'll throw this out as a motion in case somebody else feels super passionate, but I might recommend that we appoint Randy and Jenna to that five-person committee, just because they are both on the Personnel Committee, and then it also would be one less meeting that I have to go to.
I just like, I.
You can't decline.
Watch me. No, as I say, I personally feel like we should have somebody from the police department as one of our representatives, so I, it doesn't matter who, I certainly don't mind stepping back so that we can have that representative.
Well, FYI, I talked with Mike, and so Mike is planning on going to the meetings as well.
Yeah.
So I, so I think.
There'll be public meetings.
Yeah, there'll be public meetings, so I think that there's an opportunity for this five-person group to be the committee, but then also people to come as, to have a discussion at the table. But I'm envisioning that five-person group being like the voting member, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But then you have like the chief or the village administrator or me, if I show up, giving you input or, I don't know, or whatever, you just let us talk.
Dr. Bussler, Dr. Bussler would be coming from the school district, yeah.
But, I mean, I don't know, it's up to you.
I love to, I don't know, I just feel, I guess, so.
I guess I envision that someone from the police department would be at those meetings.
Yeah, no, I, okay.
We'll be there.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that their voice is heard, too, that, you know, we didn't, we set a five-person committee, we, again, in the interest of simplicity, didn't go into a lot of detail, but I want to make sure that of the three entities, that we have voices from all three sides being represented. So whatever that looks like, I just want, that's my big, that's the thing that I find most important, so.
Yeah, Cory.
I completely agree, I think that they, their viewpoint definitely needs to be seen and heard. I think it may be a little bit awkward for them to be a voting member on that committee, so I think it would be great to have their input, but I think ultimately it probably would be best if they, you know, weren't a part of that, I guess, voting aspect of it.
Yeah, I'd have, I'd say the same, I think what the school district is probably going to do is also have two school board members as their representatives, but of course, Bussler's going to be there, and, you know, other people, I mean, yeah, but voting members. He staff who will actually be implementing anything that is discussed and voted. Right. So, I would, I would agree with Jenna and Randy, I think they'd make excellent members on a board that I don't have to be at. Yeah, right. And I did ask them both before the meeting, and they both said that they would do it, so. Alright, so, I, so I'll go ahead and make that motion that we ask Randy and Jenna to be the two village appointments to that standing group. I'll second it. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so we have approval pending new operator licenses, these have been recommended by the police department. To stop and go, we have Callie J. Price, also to stop and go, Lisa E. Blumer, to have a motion to approve.
So move.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We don't, it looks like we don't have any other licenses, we have future agenda items, and then we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn, okay, so, I hear there's going to be Kate?
Yep, I'm going to get it.
Mike's going to go get the cake, everyone, please stay and thank Jeff.
Told him you offer free food, you'll see Steve.
Oh, wow. I bet Steve's missed you, Rob.
No. A barrage of, a barrage of letters.
Even if you had your notes, I don't care.